Neat needs and using the strengths of our diverse community is dedicated to preparing all students to become lifelong learners, caring individuals, and responsible citizens. Agenda order and approval. Does anyone have any questions about the agenda order? Yes?
I would like to pull the contract for under, sorry. The contracts for the summer school director duties, I'd like to pull just that before we have a discussion.
And that's under the personnel consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Any more? Alright, recommendations and commendations, we have one.
Ann Hossi, please come forward. The Board of Education of the School District of the Menominee area recognizes Ann Hossi for her work with Teacher of the Year Council of Madison, the Educator of Promise/ Educators of Excellence Retreat, and her involvement in the writing of the new state social studies chapters.
Alright, community communications. I remind everyone, first of all, do we have anyone wishing to speak? Hearing, seeing none, then we will move on. Alright, board members, superintendent, communications.
I mentioned it at the board retreat, but Dan and I were both at the middle school seventh grade year reunion fair, which was very well done, and then I also was at the CSO annual meeting, and I was nominated, elected as the backup to the backup for the at-large seat on the board, but for meeting, nothing major to report at this point, so yeah, that's possible, Sarah, let's move along.
Yes, we now have three, it's kind of the United States of the state convention, so I saw the project that I know is being on state office. They're very speaking, and then our purple and blue state officer from Miami says relax and tell us your state office. Congrats.
Since our last meeting, I was down here looking for the boundaries here for two small districts, Stellmont and Darlington. And it's very interesting to figure out how they want to change their properties, and in this case, it was like there was a little pocket of properties, and because Darlington had gotten a referendum, their taxes were going up, so they all wanted to move to the other district. And there was like eight of them, but then only two actually came in, it cost money to do the appeals, and so we denied both of them for reasons of, and one family had two people open the road at Stellmont in Darlington's district, but there was no reason that they couldn't keep going there. So it's very interesting to hear what goes on around the state, and even a little bit of chunk of money, $1,500 is a lot of money for those small districts. Just interested.
So I was wandering around the woods, Kevin, it was Friday, and the school forest, and came across a bushel of invasive garland mustard, something yellow and... I'm sorry, Kevin, you can't go Kevin. I emailed about it, and then I met two of your guys out there, it was Brian and Kevin, and we spent several hours performing garland musters, and probably had a project for a class, and I was curious to go back out and do everything that we missed. One of many, I'm actually part of the floor of the Science and Technology Division, basically, I've got a lot of history with stuff up, and so... It was good, we got a net one right away, just hopefully maybe get something like a person or something out there if you guys need to go. Anyway, I have a question, I guess this is a place to do it. So over the course of like this year, it's definitely looked a lot at, like, middle school coursework and high school coursework, but I don't know if we ever should be able to add elementary level stuff.
And so I'm wondering if we could get like to sort of, I don't even sure how you do it, but kind of like what the curriculum looks like, get them actually all to different grades, like what the subjects are, how much, what the rule and stuff, so we have a better idea, because last year my elementary was kind of white. We get like a record report on it, what subjects they teach, you know, something, how they break it down, you know, like classes and stuff, grades. I don't want to be kind of, I don't want it to be too much detail, or if we could get something on that sometime, maybe useful.
Sure, we couldn't definitely put something down for that.
I think this is the right time to ask this question or say something about this, but on Thursday of last week, I was at the soccer field, and a dad came up to me and made a comment to me about handicap parking and whether school board members could just park wherever they wanted, and I didn't have time to say anything to him, so I just handed him something else, so I just moved on. But then, and I had nobody to talk to, and then on Friday, I got another call from a different parent asking me questions about it, and again, I didn't have, I didn't know anything about it, so I couldn't, I didn't know what to even say. And then on Saturday, I was looking, and I found some information, and I saw the posts, and I was reading through everything, and I think, so there's a question and there's a statement. One, I just want some assurance from the school board, from the school district.
Is this proper, Dan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes, because I have a question.
Okay.
So I just need some assurance that, I mean, if we can make it an agenda item for the next meeting, that's fine with me, but I need some assurance from the school board that we are going to protect those, you know, to the integrity of those spots. The other thing is, is there was a question brought up about safety, and I'm concerned that there's a safety concern there with the parking in that, and so I would like that addressed as well. And I don't know how to do that, but I would like to figure out if there's a need for addressing the concerns of parking at Willconda.
I think the board, my position is that we want to maintain the integrity of our parking facilities, and I think there's a process that we should, I'll buy by it. I would say that if there is a concern of parking, illegal parking, it should be approved to the place. That's basically our view. If we have to allocate different spots or look at parking issues, that's the time for another agenda. But other than that, I think that's all we need to say, so that we just have designated certain spots, and it's up to the police to take the things that, I think, hold that on second.
I am the purple elephant in the room. Many people here follow social media. I have apologized, I have addressed the situation. I was not parked, I was sitting in my idling vehicle with my window rolled down, would have been more than happy to move out of the way for anyone, and was watching. I don't know what more anyone wants me to say. I am fine with being attacked about parking illegally, fine. I will drive myself to the police department and have them issue me a ticket. What I am not okay with are people attacking me personally, who have never had a conversation with me a day before in their life, calling me names, coming on to me. This is now affecting the whole board, and I apologize to the board and to the district, because it makes us look bad, and I am truly sorry. I've said it multiple times, I've posted it multiple places, but this is now affecting the work we should be doing as a school board, this is affecting my family, this is affecting my 13-year-old daughter, and it's starting to really hit my psyche because of the personal attacks. Yell at me all you want to about parking at a handicap spot, that is fine. I own it, I know it. I would appreciate it if we can move on, and Trish, I would really appreciate it if you would have contacted me directly.
I had a bigger issue with the safety, I didn't say anything about your name, and you're the one who...
No, but I'm the owner!
I'd like to move on if we could, please. Thank you very much. We have a full agenda, we have many things to accomplish tonight. And next on the agenda is revenue... Oh, yes.
I don't have a lot, but again, just kudos to the staff and the principals and everyone in the district who finished the school year so well. Obviously, there's a lot of moving parts at the end of the school year, and I had the opportunity to tour a few of the buildings when people were packing up, and had the opportunity to shake a lot of hands and offer a lot of things. When you look back at the course of a year, it really is amazing, the services that we are able to provide because of the support of the taxpayers and the board and our community. So thank you to everyone, we had a very good school year. I guess the only other thing to report on is, like Jim, I was out at the environmental site, I was not picking, what was it? Garland mustard, but I was out there, and this is actually a picture, it's terrible, I didn't realize it until I gave it to Jamie, it's from this morning, we're all squinting, but met out there, and we were celebrating the sign that got put up for our partnership with Don Energy and Water Source, and you can see the solar panel out there, and our environmental site is 100% powered by renewable energy. And I know that's something that the board approved and was supportive of, and we thank you for that. I really think that's better than a cap, to be able to have, to be able to say that, and be able to do that. So I think there's going to be a press release probably from Don Energy in the next few weeks, and there'll probably be some numbers in there that I can't cite off the top of my head about the amount of gigawatts or kilowatts or whatever it is, but, I'm joking, but it was really a neat thing, and we appreciate those community partnerships.
Looks like the sun's in your eyes.
Yeah, I got a little...
Because it's reflecting off the solar panels.
Yeah, it was the panels. There's a reason why I Facebooked you before I had.
Alright, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine, don't worry about it all.
Alright, okay. So moving on, revenue and expenditure reports.
Okay, if we look at the main revenue reports, we'll see the total fund 10 general fund revenues for the month of May, or fiscal year to date through the end of May. One thing I just wanted to point out, if you look at the interest, so far this year, we accrued $67,386 in interest revenue. Due to interest rates going up, and we also, this year, we invested the fund 46 money into CDs, and so we're earning a higher rate of interest on those we put them in CD accounts through American deposit. So that's good news. For our Fund 21 gift account, we've received $479,364.42. In special education, our total there is $1,397,775.49. So our revenues are looking good at this point. Our May expenditures by object, you'll notice the salaries for May are quite a bit higher than they were in 2016, '17. May was a month where we had three payrolls, and last year, June was a three payroll month, so it looks quite a bit higher, but in all actuality, it's because of the three payrolls. So overall, our all funds expenditures is at 76.34% compared to last year at 69.10%. And again, the big difference there is that debt service payment causing that percentage to be higher this year. And then if we look at our expenses by function, pretty close to the same as we were last year. Our Fund 10 were at actual year-to-date 65.7% compared to last year at 65.08. For Fund 27, we're at 78.13 compared to 74.04, so that's slightly higher. And then Fund 50, we're at 79.7 compared to 80.83. Does anyone have any questions?
So Leah and I have been having several discussions, as we do at this time of year. As you know, our fiscal year ends June 30th, and as we're looking at it, we're projecting probably somewhere between $500,000 and $800,000 where we think we're going to come out in the black. There's so much that has to happen between now and our July school board meeting, but like last year, we could have an opportunity to pay down some of our old PEBB debt or make, and/or make a contribution to Fund 46 in July. If we do that and allocate those funds, those would be eatable expenses, so then those funds would be available in the future, either in Fund 73 for old PEB or Fund 46 for capital improvements, and by expending those funds or moving those funds now into those funds, I'm saying funds a lot, that would allow us to capture more state aid, which then lowers our tax levy next year. So we're going to continue to watch it very, very closely for the next few weeks, but the board can anticipate a recommendation in July to make those final year-end changes.
Is there any talk about using some of the funds for students, textbooks or books, or something that is needed in a classroom, is there any talk about using any part of money that is needed for the schools?
Well, part of the challenge is that the expenditures are supposed to be for this budget year. You know, if we bought books now in school, not even session, it would be, it could be problematic. We have though purchased, I know Brian has worked with Tara Ellison, our reading specialist, and some of our building principals to replenish some of the book rooms and make some additions to some of the book rooms. So I think we've already done maybe what year?
Well, not just books, but just in general, is there anything that, you know, the classrooms are lacking that could help the student experience, I'm just remembering it. If we've ever thought about that.
Yeah, we do, we work with the principals starting in the fall each year, and then as the budgets wind down, like Brian's budget, I know there's been several purchases made throughout the year in a line that was, wasn't shared.
You know, just the textbooks alone last year, this year of last year's, 29% higher than what we spent last year on textbooks. That's for the science curriculum.
Oh, right.
Yeah, it was a combination of arcade type science adoption, and then working with the local administration, it's not a simple additional piece of the plan, it's a secondary, okay, I think it's an option, so we purchased additional resources that may help that experience. And given that, correct, related to, as Joe was mentioning, but as dated here too, in seasonal days, and replacements.
Good question. Any other questions?
Next on the agenda, monthly faculty report.
One thing to point out on the employment report, I know you've already reviewed this, but Dave Carlson, one of our nighttime custodians at Willconda, is going to be moving to Naperville next year. Jim Carr has retired, and I know Mr. Dave was real popular with a lot of the students at Willconda, telling him to come in from the late afternoon, and I think he'll be able to fit out there at Naperville.
Questions? Alright, moving on to the consent agenda, action to approve the consent agenda. Do I have any requests?
Can I just have a blunt question about, just to validate, in regards to that turf?
Yes.
Do they not, first off, when does our contract go with Stout? Is it a year in the contract, is it three years, what does that look like?
Really, we have a perpetual agreement with them. We partnered with Stout when Donovan Williams Stadium was built, and there was a large donation with the understanding that the high school would play there. However, with the turf being replaced, our athletic director worked with Stout's athletic director, and then I worked with the chancellor quite a bit. We talked about a lot of different scenarios about having maybe an annual B or a two-year commitment or something. We all felt it was best just to maintain with the partnership that we have, similar to how the stadium was built. So this would allow us to continue to play in the stadium the way we have it set up.
So I'm somewhat new with that sports complex of the board. What was, I thought part of the rationale of heaven, the sports complex, was to move everything to the high school, is that not the case?
Well, that, there's a phasing plan for that sports complex, and kind of the grand vision, if we had to, or if we wanted to, the grand vision could be to build a full-scale complex. But when we look at the number of dollars it would take, you know, we ended up having about a $1.1 million project to get it where it is now, and to actually make it a stadium similar to what we have at Stout, would be millions of dollars or more. And when we look at the resources that we have in our community, and look how close they are together, and how well it's worked, and talking with Coach Buddha, and talking with the athletic director, and talking with Stout, we feel that this is the best option for our community. We've been able to share a lot of other facilities, but in the event that we weren't able to work something out with Stout, because, you know, we didn't know how much the turf would cost, or if there's going to be other expenses, we wanted to make sure there was flexibility. But the big piece of keeping our students on campus really probably had more to do with track, and then also being able to offer physical education classes and our other classes who are using that area, better access. It's also provided the soccer team at the home of that, right on the high school grounds, instead of on the river heights.
Dave, would you like a motion? Yes.
I have a question.
Well, should we have a motion first, or before we discuss? Okay, alright, let's, I'll make the motion. And do I have a second? One second.
How long is it to check that one out?
Well, that's hard to say. It's projected for at least 10 years. I think this latest turf lasts a little longer, but it's been pretty rough. We're actually very excited, we thought it was going to be the summer of 2019 when they were going to be able to replace it, but they were able to get things approved at the state quicker, so we're really happy that it's going to be done this summer, because for the health and safety of all the players on there, we think it's a really good move to do it now. You know, they showed some pictures to us, they do some agents on that turf after every ballgame, and there's bags and bags of fiber material that gets swept off there, it's really deteriorating, so we think this is really, really good.
So we're getting quite far, aren't we, so?
Well, we did an analysis of the amount of time we spend out there compared to Stout, and I do think we're getting a good deal. They've been great to work with.
Is that the original turf?
No, I think that's the second carpet, at least the second.
I think part of the reason it's the second though is they didn't put the right thing in the first time. If I remember hearing correctly, that was a long time ago, it was too hard, they were having some issues, they had to go back and redo it.
The technology on field turf has changed tremendously, or less techy, and it is a lot safer for the athletes to play on a better surface.
Finally, wish would be, is that maybe that Stout would be gracious enough to put a sign up that would say also, I don't know, most things.
If we want to buy one, I'm pretty sure that everyone would work with some certain signage.
Like a state nation sign, you can kind of... Okay, alright. Are we ready to go? Motion passed, thank you very much. Alright, the personnel consent agenda, and we are going to discuss everything except the contract for Mary Bagby.
Susan Harson.
And sorry, for a second, sorry.
Jamie.
Okay, alright, so...
I'll, this, for a second.
Thank you.
So a couple things to point out, first of all, Jamie made the change that was requested in terms of the agenda. Also, I came in yesterday to make sure that we put this in. We did, we did have a candidate who has verbally accepted a speech and language vacancy, so we're really happy about that. So you might not have seen that if you voted for docs earlier, so we've added that to the personnel agenda. And then finally, I just wanted to say that we're really going to miss Leah and her work, and wish her the best of luck at Woodward. And when you look at all the great things that have happened with our finance over the last couple of years, working with Leah, saving almost $2 million in loan term debt, you know, she just reported on the interest. You know, we worked together on trying to get more interest out of the Fund 46 Capital Improvement Fund, just a lot of really good decisions, and gonna miss you, it's a nice, nice job, thank you.
Yes, we will. Sure. Oh, this is it? Okay, thanks.
Jim's behind every clean after the meeting.
Actually, we're going to go watch the Brewers, and it comes a place, so I suppose I can treat. Alright, any more discussion? Okay. Action to approve changes to the teacher compensation scale. Do I have a motion? And a second?
One second.
So just to explain the change, we went through that study last year with our teachers, and the changes definitely have been well received, and they definitely needed to happen. What we have found in issuing the contracts this year, and Sam did really good work on this, two things. One is, there is the potential of a fairly new teacher getting their master's degree right away, but then they would have to wait before they are able to receive the incentive. I don't think it's going to happen very often, but we just don't think that's right, because if they're going to invest the time, and especially the finances to get the master's degree, we would like to provide them access to a master's degree quicker. So that's one piece. So that's one piece. Actually, I think that's in the handbook. But the other piece is we have some teachers that don't have the master's degree and they're capped. If you know our, our scale, you would need the, the master's degree to go all the way down to the bottom of the scale. And while we want to provide incentive to teachers who get the master's degree, we don't necessarily want to compute it for the ones who are truly not doing it. So we're suggesting that we add a step, not a large step, but a $500 step to the end of that lane for the teachers who do not have master's degrees. So that's what the recommendation is.
Yes, how many teachers are there?
Same unit from menu was?
I think we had, we had talked about, are you talking like for, for which piece of it?
The, the last, the ones that don't have their master's degree, but I guess at the level.
The ones that would be thrown in. Was it P?
I think so. I think it was, I thought it was eight to 10 yells. I can, I can find that out.
No, no, it's okay. I was just curious.
It's, it's not that many.
So does that mean that they're capped there at that level except for the cost of the change to everybody else?
Right. And now when we look at the teacher compensation for next year, we're going to bring a recommendation depending on what the CPI is, you know, the whole scale only moved $215 when you pay all the steps. So it's very likely that we'll have to look at adding steps to the end of the master's lane and probably to the end of this lane. How large those steps are will, will depend on the CPI and that's something we'll investigate next year, but we think this is a fix that needs to happen so Sam can reissue contracts to those few people who are affected.
Any more discussion? Let's vote.
Does word docs reason for all these? Okay, good.
Motion passes. You? Okay. Action agenda, approve employee here.
I apologize, I jumped the gun a little bit in my discussion of the last item. One of the handbook changes is what I mentioned about allowing earlier access for the teachers into the master's lane. Most of the other changes really are more clerical in nature. Another one that's more substantial would be the notice that we're asking hourly employees to provide the district if they're going to retire. Currently, only 30 days of notice is required. And I've talked to a few of our hourly people who are going to be retiring soon, they didn't feel like the 120-day notice would be a problem at all and the fact that they are going to get a little bit of a local benefit does make it, I think, reasonable for us to require that notice. The final thing is just supervisory aides in the school district used to be governed through a separate board policy. We think for consistency and better communication that we should move that group into the handbook as well. So I emailed all the aides, I don't know, about a month ago and made sure that they had an opportunity for feedback and there was no, no problem with that, so. Are there any other questions?
Do we have a motion?
I'm sorry, I jumped that too. Too excited tonight.
And a second?
Sure.
Any other questions? It's not coming up for me.
Yeah, me either. It's freezing up weird.
Oh, there it is.
What we're waiting for, I do want to point out that board docs sent us a message and said that they've been having some technical difficulties. I think they're, they've been doing some updates. So it is not our local district or a local problem. They, they've apologized, I should be inconvenienced. I wish they would do their work, not on a Monday night.
I'm still waiting for something.
Just like the normal. Mine is, is re- trying to reload.
Okay, let's do, let's do a local.
Misses South talk here, Penny?
Yes.
Heather, I, I mean, I have some of them. Can I just go to who I don't have? Heather?
Yes.
Diana? Amy?
Yes.
And then Tricia?
Yes, I thought I.
Yeah, it's.
It's a bit silent.
They're sleeping. I have the law, yeah.
All right, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on. Action to approve the preliminary budget for the 2018-19 school year. Do I have a motion?
Sure.
And a second?
I'll second.
Questions?
Dan, I think it should be pointed out that the board did discuss this in detail in May for anybody in the audience who might not have been here.
Are you ready to vote?
Are you ready to vote?
Nothing's changed.
I can't even get it to come up at all.
Yeah, mine's not, mine's just spinning.
Well, does anyone have any questions? Are you, hello? All right, let's vote.
Can I take a roll call? Penny?
Yes.
Heathers?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tricia?
Yes.
I can't even get Amy, I can't, there you go.
Okay, motion passes. All right. Action Agenda D, action to authorize the district administrator to fill teaching vacancies for the 18-19 school year. Do I have a motion? Motion and a second? And a second?
So I'd like to point out, this is not an item that we already have discussed. This is a regular scheduled item we've done in the last several years and especially with some of the candidate goals not being what they are, AMPUS not having as many regular meetings, it's important that we're able to hire people on a timely basis. So this is something that the board has approved in the past and I would recommend they do it again.
I was thinking same protocol, Sam and the team of admins and whatnot, so.
Yes. It just allows us to offer that contract before.
Sure. Yep, okay.
That's where we're going with the next.
Normally that one I noticed that we've had already changes from original hires, you know, set in here and then they have, they need to go some other places.
Couple of places.
So I guess it's kind of good, you can do that and keep up. Any other discussion? Let's vote.
Local.
So Heather? It may, some of you have already voted, do you have it?
Okay, well, let's do a local then.
Okay. Now it's who I don't have. Penny?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tricia?
So, motion passes. E, action to authorize the hiring of the director of business services.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
What I'd like to point out here is that, you know, as you know, Leah is, has resigned and we've accepted it. She will be done with the school district at the end of the month here. We have posted her position, right now we have eight applicants. We are planning to interview applicants on Thursday with a team of district administrators, also some principals and a representative from the business office. We're hopeful that we'll have a successful search. I've also been investigating other plans as well. I even talked, reached out to RW Barrett, they have a consulting service that could sometimes help us in the event that we have an issue like this. Our former business official, Marlene Clark, actually works for Barrett and the cost is pretty substantial, it's $150 a day, but depending on the type of person we're able to hire, if we're able to hire someone, you know, we may look at some consulting services, but I think providing us with the flexibility to interview these candidates and offer a contract before the July meeting could be important. I'd like to get someone being around running as soon as possible, as long as it's a qualified candidate. If not, we will look at more of a consulting or interim service because we all know how important a hire is.
Discussion.
I said, yeah, it is an interview process. God, it was useful to have a board member on your side. Good thing to do with it. Okay, I mean, I would like to. This is Thursday.
Why, you remember why that was?
That was the process we decided on that because it was, you know, it was a hard little job, it was important to have a school board member on the committee. And so Jeff, Jeff Jager and I both kind of split through each other's committee, hiring committees.
The hiring committee for? Just for her position?
Just for her position, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying, kind of forgot what all that all went, but yeah, I think part of it was with Marlene, having been here for so long too, I think the board felt this was important to have a board member on, we should have that important.
Well, and I can't bring it up on board, I can't recall in your synopsis or summary of what you're laying on, you need to say something about what's at board.
Sure, I'm not opposed to it, I just, I think as a board, I should decide which.
Our department did mean that he deals with transportation committee, has the experience, Jimmy's got experience too, but he sees some of the other financial sides of things too.
Well, that's fine, we'll have to work with him.
Are you available?
I'm busy.
I'll look at Thursday, mid-morning.
Is anyone, is that all? All right, and so.
So then, so David will sit down with the interviews. Then how does David have a say with the contract or do we still rely on you or how does that then work if an offer, there's a qualified candidate?
I'm happy to collaborate with David on the contract. Typically, I negotiate the contracts with our administrators that we hire and more gratify them like I do with the teacher contracts. I think we've definitely had success with that, but if the board would like, you know, me collaborate with Dave, that's absolutely fine with me.
I would just guess how that process works.
Sure. Does that sound good? Do you want to authorize me to hire, make the hire in collaboration with Dave's charter?
Sounds good.
Great, okay.
Well, I think, we could, otherwise if they authorized me, Dave, you know, I'd be happy to do it with him. If you want to make an official, you can.
I think we have a gentleman to do. And so, any other discussion? Let's vote. Let's vote.
Can you give it to me? Sorry, it's coming up.
Yeah, but I don't know, it's still a little larger spinning in the corner, so let's see what happens.
I can't even log it.
Yeah.
I've gone, yes. Amy?
Yes.
And Tricia?
Pardon me? Yes.
Everybody else?
All right, motion passes.
I apologize for this. I know it's not our fault, but I'm, it's embarrassing, it's frustrating, I'm sure you are too.
All right, action to approve the goals and major activities for 2018-2019. Do I, do I have a motion?
A second.
A second.
Or two?
I'd like to point out to the board that another goal has been added since what you saw on the agenda. Brian and I have been reviewing preliminary data from this past year and one trend that we think needs some investigation for sure is student attendance. So we're suggesting that we add a goal and I put the language in there and basically what the goal would be is we would study our attendance procedures and our trends and then provide a report to the board with some recommendations if any changes might need to be made. And as we all know, student attendance is very important to student success and it is one of the measures that we have in our score report card, so we want to make sure we use the data that we have and then be responsive to it.
Question?
No, I appreciate the editing of action verbs and measurable, they really looked good. There was only two, is there any resources that didn't seem to, it was the last two. The communication and advocacy stakeholders and taking advantage of grants. I didn't know if there could be something, can you forward us the letters when we do so? You know, or the board members of what those letters look like when you're advocating legislation, legislations or?
I think you could actually.
Okay, I'm asking, thank you. So if we could do something that way, because there was nothing measurable in that one. So last two.
I'm sure I can. It was in the resources one time?
Yeah, yep, yep. And then the next one, continued to take advantage, which I know you do, I just didn't know if there was like a running list of what grants were.
Sure. Yeah, that makes sense, because there, there always have a measurable piece.
Yeah, everything else, yeah, they were absolutely, very, uh, complicated.
I appreciated the suggestion.
I can't bring it up, but there was a date that was mixed up too.
I fixed that, you didn't email me on that one?
Yeah, but there was another one that I looked at too that said something about, it was like 2018 or 2019, 2018, I think you meant 2019, 2020.
Okay.
And I think it's under personnel, the same.
Yeah, it was just like going down.
Oh, okay, yep, I see that now. So if you'd like, you could approve the goals and I can make those careful changes. I don't, I don't think they're going to change the attendance of goals at all.
Any other discussions?
Yeah, you know, when I introduced the customized, well, improving staff on the environment, one of the board ones I put under was invasive species survey. And after what I found, I was kind of like, I'm going to send it to kind of version, it's maybe for a community that's been studying stuff and it's not that good, so if you could add some people like adding somebody else there, looking over. And invasive partnerships aren't accounted for, invasive partnership, right, I'll make these services and stuff, but I think it's something we could do this year to make sure we can take that to be addressed for us.
Conducing invasive species survey.
Anything else out there?
It's just a word caution on that, hey, a gentleman at the farm, his son did a lease assignment, invasive species, I did it last year at college and did pretty good with garlic and mustard and a lot of the stuff is carried by birds, you know, the secret garden, things like that, so, I mean, I think we have to, we're not going to get every secret plant.
No, you're not, if you don't.
This story.
Yeah, but if you don't, if you don't be proactive with it, it will take over.
And actually, the number one, and look at the maps, the number one spreader of invasive species is action vehicles. They start out getting down by the roads and then the birds and things go from there. So they really scare a lot of the birds and the birds, and it's like garlic and mustard and a whole bunch of them. Ditches that is farming through the forest, but it's just something you need to know to find out, is there anything else out there we have to deal with before it gets too critical?
Do you have, for informational purposes, do you have any idea how much a survey like that would cost?
I don't know how much that actually costs to me. If you work with a base of partnership, you all sorts, it's, I've worked on them all the time. If you work with invasive species partnership, they do all sorts, I've worked on them all the time. They do all sorts of stuff with different governmental bodies and advisors and so. Yeah, if you, if there is any cost, it's not going to be there. Yeah, and I thought through most of the trainings, I could, in some ways I can just wire replace and try to leave the survey, so it's not so correct and discounted. You better have someone else go, go and arrange some people, but yeah, it would not be a very expensive procedure to any.
Yes. One other thing, community engagement portion of it, there's, first bullet point, the talks about diversity committee and recommendations. And I brought this up at last meeting as well, I think it's important that we, when we go through this stuff, that we work on diversity in both ways, you know, it's not just, not just one side of the, I think the way that Peggy was treating on some of this stuff shows is any people just relax a little bit on stuff. So I guess in the school district, inner schools, I see it on the egg side, you know, people are so alright on issues nowadays. But they have a hard time meeting a member of both sides, so I think that has to be part of the discussion. Go through this whole thing, diversity stuff that we're willing to work at both viewpoints and sides. Yes.
I'd just like to address that, I think you're right in some respects, but when it comes to a conservative standpoint, sometimes conservatism can also be something that's discriminatory. In other words, you know, like if you're, conservativeness can sometimes mean that you're against certain races, certain issues that our policies say are, you know, non-discriminatory, like gender and those kinds of things. So I think it's good to have both sides, but I just don't want us to break any rules or laws that we already have in our books as far as policies are concerned, is all I can say.
Do you think the goal needs to be changed or are you just?
I was going to ask David if he wanted to make.
I don't think it needs to be changed as long as, I don't know, Dan, you're on the diversity committee, and Jim, you're on this one, so. Just as long as that's kept in mind, you know, that, you know, we saw it in a forum last year. That we've seen it different times during the year where the year is up, and I just think that it needs to be, look at, full size. People need to be, be relaxing.
Maybe one suggestion for these goals, there's no legal reason why it would have to be approved tonight, especially in order, there's a few more suggestions and a couple clerical things that can be cleaned up. I could do that and put it in consent agenda for the July meeting if you'd like to table the item.
Do I hear a motion to table? So. Second, second. We're voting on the motion to table. This. And a voice, voice vote.
I'm just, all in favor?
I, goes. Pass. All right. Next on the agenda. We move into discussion items. Summer maintenance plan report.
We have that one being moved into.
Oh, where is it? I don't see it.
It's not out.
Oh, okay. Okay, I was, I'm sorry.
You look behind you, Dan, it's on the wall.
Okay, that's what I'm going to do. Way of the clock.
All right, approved contracts for reassignment of directors, summer school position, okay. Do I hear a motion to approve? Discussion.
Okay, the reason I had this poll is I would like to know a little bit of history of, Susan has done a fabulous job the past few years. I am assuming, but this is the data I would like to know, did she start at 7149 the whole time? Or did she start at a lower scale and then kind of worked her way up to that amount? I'm just wondering if it's appropriate to start someone at the amount that maybe Susan worked up to, if that makes sense? The, I guess I'm just looking at the history of, of the, the contract amount. I don't have anything against the person, it's just I'm wondering about the, the financial component of it.
No, it's, it's a good question. The, the position of summer school director used to be paid less. And we have made changes to that, we've added cost of living increases. Also, I believe it was last August, the board increased the pay, because when we, we expanded our summer school, when I first came here four years ago, we didn't have really anything past 4th of July hardly. And then we added the, kind of the camps, summer camps and the back to school kickstarter type of stuff. So the position expanded and that, I think that's probably the biggest reason why the pay increased. I think with the amount of work that's expected and the amount of responsibility, I think it's very reasonable for the school to start. I think it's a good question.
That was kind of my question, like, I, I mean, she does, I mean, it has improved significantly, there's lots of, I, you know. I'm sure it's very time consuming, I don't know how she does it, but I was just curious about that component, if it was appropriate to start at the same scale and.
I, I think in some cases it makes sense to build it a step system, but I think in this case, it's almost, it's almost more of a paid a position type of situation because of the commitment during the summer.
Thank you.
Any other questions about that?
All right. So do we make a motion for that?
There was already a motion.
We didn't push out, I'll get it first and a second for that. And so we need to do a roll call.
Mine's up now, but I don't want me to. Yeah, is everybody up?
Okay. All right.
Trisha checked though, I don't blame you, it's all brought straight.
I can't even log in.
All right, roll call.
Trisha do that.
Yes.
Everyone else came through?
Yeah, everyone came through.
If I can say something, I think the summer school is critically important for our school district. It's one way in which we not only further the learning for our students, but it also helps us generate revenue. So I think that's an area that we need to continually improve, expand as much as possible.
I was on the end of the summer slide.
Right, exactly. That's my two cents. All right, moving on. So we are through, now we're into the discussion items, summer maintenance plan report.
All right, let's see if I'm working. So Kevin provided some notes and I have a little bit of support doc, so you can kind of follow along if, if your board doc is working. Kevin's doing a great job of building grounds and as you know, eight different buildings and then all these facilities, there's a lot of work that has started this summer. We try to do anything that's disruptive when the students are here as much as possible. So Kevin, you want me to just give the board a little update on where things are at?
So I guess the biggest thing that's going on right now is we've been buying the middle schools and the piles of dirt over there. Middle school, we're receiving heavily the most attention this summer, we have the range magic going on. So three areas that we're concentrating on, I'll give you pictures. We're working around storage shed, we're working in the front of the building, the floor part of the parking lot for water pools and that main entrance, what we like to call a skewer. So Penver Companies from Monomene got bid for this and they're doing a little bit of a scam screen.
What are they doing with the skewer?
They're working on a little bit.
That's a rock.
It is, they haven't started, they've been trying to work around the kids, but now that school's off, they're going to, they're going a little bit more on that. I think I got a little more picture.
They take too much of fun, but go ahead, go ahead and keep moving.
I have a list that I think you both saw, but I'm not going to read down the list of those other items at the middle school that will be part of that. Also this summer, we have a lot of potential projects due to the school safety requirement. Those are kind of divided in a couple areas, but the DOJ primary and advanced levels, some are likely, but primary jobs are both through. For us, I can share the resistance film on one main entry of our schools. So we have provided all those measurements. Other things that we'll be looking at, all the advanced level, safety agreements are the same film on secondary entrances. Interior door windows, side lights, some other things, maybe fencing and buttons, surveillance system, so. Each location, kind of, choose what they would like for their school, so lots going on there. Other things that we'll be doing, kind of keeping locations, major doors going, parking lots, painting, Oaklawn's, we're going to see a lot of school in summer eighteen this year. That's it, besides going on, I think that's, any questions?
This, I don't know if it applies this or not, but I had a question the other day about the school safety grant and so on. We're working on the, they were asking about the door staff, that you can just slide underneath the door instead of moving to the desk, so. Do you know, I mean, are you looking into that or?
Kevin, can I ask one?
Sure.
So it specifically identifies the grant that those cannot be purchased unless they're, is it EDA? ADE compliance is the biggest issue.
Are you serious?
And I don't think there's one on the market that's compliant. So no, those, those cannot be purchased apparently.
The kids, like, please get those, so they can move on to the desks.
Yeah. And the past few years, before you were here, there were some issues with lawn care and stuff, and it was, and what, how that's going, what's happening and stuff there.
Sure, so we have a little start to the list here, our third, third season start this week, so we have three seasonal lawn care employees. I've improved the equipment, we now have lowers, trimmers, hedge trimmers, recently purchased a trailer that I'm going to turn into a landscaping trailer. Have all the fixtures and tools, get those looks set up, a little bit of a, a system down there. One of them will focus on the areas close to the maintenance shop and two others will go all together with a truck and trailer.
Yes, what do you have for more stuff?
Your specific question, we have three zero turns, two zero turns and a large one. Is that what you mean, how many?
Yeah, just how many and how big are the decks on?
Uh, the main zero turn that we use, I believe is a six foot, the smaller gas one, I don't know off the top of my head. The largest one is the most unpopular one, so we have some decisions to make, you felt to go for.
Is that just, you're getting into tight areas or?
It's more for the fields, specifically for our fields, because it's so large, you have therefore hard to get it.
My wife wants a seventy-four inch, she's crazy. I have a question, maybe Art can help answer this, the middle school shop, there was some discussion about reclaiming that as a usable space. Any progress been made on that?
Yeah, we're hoping with our new STEM class that the shop will be used, so we're, I actually was in it today, moving some things around. Right now I have some ceiling tiles that need to be put up in there, but the plan is to use that next year, yes.
There's no maintenance that needs to be done on that?
No, mostly just some minor cleanups, and Mr. Sterry from high school was over today too, so he was checking some of the saws and things. Looking good.
Thank you. Any other questions? One last question, the blacktop maintenance, is that for the ASC or is that for all sites in the very bottom? It says thirty-year plan to be adjusted for blacktop maintenance.
Yep, so, no, not just ASC, the summer plan, NAP number rights, and they are in the plan, all locations are in the plan, so.
Trisha, why won't we find out if we were, were, if we were at the safety grant, when were they starting doing that?
Well, I submitted it on Thursday, the due date was Friday, so we got it in head before the site did this.
Yeah.
Some, some schools already heard already.
Yeah, the promotion.
But I think, I think there was a couple that got expedited for media reasons, so I'm guessing it's going to take at least a few weeks.
Okay, and then do you expect to do some of that and then this summer you had it approved?
Well, some of it's going to be, we're doing corporate purchasing with CISA ten, the security films.
Yeah.
The hope is to have it done ninety days after approval, so, yes, we'd really hope for the summer. And even like the camera work, all that stuff will be easier, but as you can imagine, these companies are getting bombarded, so. I'm not anticipating it's all going to be done in the summer, but the idea, the idea behind the grant is to do as much done before the start of the school year as possible.
And then since we're kind of on that topic, do we know anything more with the city council and the resource officer, with that discussion last Monday?
Nope, nope, I'm not trying to schedule a meeting right now with the mayor and I'm not, I need to talk about the financial piece, but it did sound like there was more.
Let me ask you, is there anything that, say, we don't get grant funding or the grant funding will be, is there anything that you feel is critical enough that you need to move in here regardless of whether we get money from the grant?
That's a good question, I, I think I'd want to sit down with the principals and the leadership team and prioritize the list. I could probably do it in my head a little bit, but I'd want to get some feedback before it terminates. But yeah, I think, I think some of those things we would, we would want to look forward on. One that comes to my mind would be some of the camera issues that we have, we have some really good camera systems in our district, but there have been some spots that have been identified as missing. And we do have a couple cameras that just aren't clear enough to really be effective, but I'd want to get their feedback before we formalize that.
Okay.
Is that something, if you wanted to, we could use some of the surplus money to spend on, or that still a great opportunity if you did that?
Yes, I don't think, I don't think we'll know in time, but perhaps, I, I will say though, we, we have made a lot of these upgrades as part of the maintenance improvements throughout the year, through our maintenance budget. NAP system has totally been redone with the cameras, we identified several holes at the high school that have already been addressed. The cameras in the grant really are more focused on Oaklawn and the middle school and River Heights. So, but yeah, Jim, I think if we don't get that money approved, I think those would be probably on the higher priority list for next year's maintenance.
Okay, all right.
Thanks, Karen.
Ready to move on? The inventory of diversity-related activities initiatives in the SDMA.
Well, Jim and Dan certainly speak to this too, but I'll just introduce it. One of the things that the diversity committee did was work together and collaborated with the staff, not just the committee, with the staff. And just to try to get a baseline of some of the diversity-related items that we are doing in our district, because we are doing a lot. And I want to make sure to make this clear though, we always think there's more we can do and we're going to continue to identify areas where there's room for growth. However, if you look at the list, there really has been a lot of great things done in our district. Really appreciate some of the committee members, I know Mrs. Cold and Mrs. Yanish spent time actually taking the inventory and coding it in a way where we could identify, you know, kind of how many things fit within each category. You can see that some categories, there's, there's a lot being done, there's probably some, some categories where there's some room for growth, so. You know, we do a lot with equity, diversity, inclusivity, social, emotional learning, and we continue to do that moving forward. One of our next steps as a committee, I think, will be to analyze that breakdown. Right now it's really more of an inventory, I think next year as we get the committee back together, there's going to be more of an analysis piece and I, I would, I would guess that through our strategic planning and then, you know, with the board that we'll be identifying some recommendations for moving forward. Jim and Dan, do you have anything?
I don't think that, it was just kind of, you said it's a baseline, and then for the committee, and as, as a committee, to kind of take a look at what's there and kind of decide what we're going to do next. Where there's holes, whether it's make activities to fill in, whether it's, you know, through PD or creating more activities or something, but yeah. But yeah, I think that was kind of, it's kind of what we got, it's what we need to do, so the idea was what we did.
I agree. And thank you very much for that.
Any other questions?
Just a spelling question under S two.
Okay, I'll take a look at it after the meeting. Thank you. S two?
Yeah.
All right.
Annual P D I S report.
Tony, go ahead when you're ready.
All right. So this is an annual report that I do. I'll get right into it. What is P D I S? And I'm not going to read everything to you. So I look at P D I S as more of a proactive approach to social emotional learning. And so instead of always being reactive, that we have things in place to reinforce and teach, teach behavior to kids. And when that is not working, we provide more intensive services. So we have school-wide behavior goals, be safe, be respectful, be responsible is one of them, and then also cares for the cooperation assertion, responsibility, and self-control. So we have school-wide goals that we talk about all year. So we teach the expectations. So instead of, and we even do this at our middle school, we're still teaching those expectations at our middle school level. So instead of expecting kids to come into school, always knowing how to use the bathroom, always knowing what, what are the goals surrounding the cafeteria, what are the rules surrounding the playground, we teach, we teach them so that the expectation is that all kids know what, what they're supposed to be doing in certain spaces. And then there's reteaching times that we, if we notice an area, so we notice the playground is, we're having a lot of issues on the playground, we might do a reteaching of expectations. And so again, here's our monthly reteaching for monthly needs. Typically, they are run by students. School-wide celebrations, so kids that are following expectations, there's some school-wide celebrations. This is fun, this one at Oakland, they did. Our middle school, so these are some students being copying, good. So again, it's catching students and recognizing students for that positive behavior, not always just identifying that kids are doing something that they should.
My son's in the picture. You know, I asked him when I came home that day if anything happened at school. Nothing, nothing. Until I saw it on Twitter, you know, that, and he's like, Brian! I forgot!
Some of our schools, so the kids are being taught, they get tickets, and this is here at River Heights. I think trophies is one of their most favorite things that they can win for tickets, correct? Those are the old ones. They're old trophies, so kids don't care.
We got some old cow trophies.
I promise you. The bigger the better, so if you have old trophies, I think I would take them from you, because kids absolutely love to win trophies, it doesn't matter, it's what it is. Middle school, so they do have a sign up there, kids being taught doing right. The other picture is there's a donut activity, so kids that are following expectations, they have a chance to eat some donuts. Again, link crew at our high school, starting the year off in a very positive way for our students and connecting new students with students that are our classmates. So what happens when we don't follow expectations? Again, there's some reteaching. Some of these parent communication forms are used depending on, on what the incident was, and sometimes it's just about reteaching, so telling, you know, we all make mistakes and let's reteach and see if you can follow expectations the next time. Majors, so let's say we have minors and majors, and that some kids, automatic majors might be fighting, you know, aggressive property damage. Or if you have, if you've been at a minor and then there's a reteach and then another, you change to three minors, it says three minors of the same behavior in thirty days could constitute an major, meaning, you know, we're giving you opportunities and, you know, now you're too bad. Check-in and check-out, this is one strategy to P D I S for students who are having a little more difficulty with some behavior. It's a way of connecting them with adults in the building, and it doesn't always necessarily the classroom teacher, it could be, we use custodials, we use, I think food service workers, I think we use clerical, we use previous teachers from previous years before. Typically, the student has a say in who their check-in and check-out person is. So that person may meet with them in the morning, talk about behavior expectations, the student may go throughout the day, they may check in with them, but there's always a check-out at the end of the day to talk about how the day went, any more improvements, what goals we're going to set, and again, it's a way to connect the students positively, so it's always not a negative thing, it's to, to build in some positive reinforcements and a positive connection with the adult in the building.
And I think there's quite a bit of interaction between the check-in and check-out supervisor and teacher as well during the day, it's something did come up.
Something did come up that they need to have a little discussion about, yeah. So this is an example of what one check-in and check-out sheet may look like. They all kind of look different depending on the student, depending on what goals that they're working on. So social emotional learning is very important, so some of the programs that we're using, this is zones of regulation. This is, we started this, this year, really a kickoff. We had individuals from, I think, Wakanda and Oakland attended training in Chicago, and that was the closest training that there was, and we're hoping to, that it's going to be closer next year and that we'll be able to send more people. I think one of the four presentations a couple of weeks ago, they have had a presentation where kids talked about their zones. So again, it's a felt understanding where you are in your body and your behavior and what zone that you're in. So goes alongside some of our mindfulness that we're doing, health realization that you may have heard of previously, this very much complements that.
Like the chair.
Yes, it is, very much like the chair, except, and that picture, the zones of regulation, that those are actually our students here that have created, so, yes.
So on the zones, so how is that, you said, you sent a couple of teachers?
Yes, we sent, I think, four or five staff down to Chicago, then they brought that back into their building to train their staff and get them back. And so now, hopefully, we're going to be able to send more people to the training. If not, those individuals have actually, I think one of our last PD days, they actually did a PD session for individuals that might learn more about the zones, and that we'll continue to do that if we can't find a closer training. So I haven't seen, I requested that our CISA bring, bring the zones here, because Chicago is, you know, it's, it's hard to travel that far.
So only a few classrooms are actually doing it?
No, it's actually, I would say, Oakland is full, fully doing it.
The whole school.
The whole school. So, the whole school. So it's kind of a universal system.
How about the other elevens?
That's where we're, we're building in more capacity for them to, to do that. Second steps, that is done, we're going to start 4K with second steps. We've done an elementary, it's typically run through our guidance, doing their developmental guidance or their monthly guidance lessons. And this year, we started in sixth grade, because they just, second steps just released the middle school modules for that, and then hopefully we'll be building that into seventh and eighth grade. Superflex is another, that would be for students that need more intensive, so it's not necessarily universal, it would be more students who are needing more social emotional, social skills, direct instruction, superflex is something that we use too, which complements the zones of regulation and kind of builds on that. So that is not looking for students, superflex would be something added to that. There's another layer. Another thing I want to mention, I just, in a training today, I was part of a prepare training, which is crisis preparedness, in that we talked specifically, the presenter actually brought up second steps and the zones of regulation as a way to, if we are doing things like that, it actually helps our students in timing of crisis, because we are, we're giving them, teaching them strategies in order to be resilient. So, so that goes a direct link to that. So I was very happy that we already had some of these things already. Collecting data, so we do collect data, we use the educliner system, we collect data on majors that happen within our building. This is kind of what it would look like on educliner. And so we've collected locations, so let's say, and it's really hard to see, but I, I, on that, but I just wanted to give you an example. We collect data on the time of day that the incident happened. We collect where the location was, what day of the week it happened. So we can actually then drill down and determine, you know, even for a particular student, we can say, you know, Wednesdays in the lunchroom are their hardest time of the day. So when we want to talk about an intervention, we can really target that intervention to the time, the location, the place that it's happening. Then we can also do this for our school-wide, like the teaching, our school-wide interventions, our school-wide things that we need to focus on, we can say, you know, the month of January is really hard for, for our kids in the lunchroom. What could we do differently to prepare kids so that that isn't that hard? So we do collect data and use data in that way, so that we can then target and look at our interventions and be more mindful about the interventions that we're providing. Does that make sense?
Do they tie that in with, let's say January, just for example, if the kids are locked in for a week straight?
Well, yeah, we, we can talk about that. So then like, yeah, because it's too cold, so what, because, is there something else that we could do? Maybe the schools they do, go do walking club, or how can we get this energy out? Because we can see this right. Yes, some of it is, you can't prevent the weather, it is what it is, but is there something else maybe we could do differently? Does that make sense? Here is our school major reports. I did get a question about last year's data. I was in a training today, so I didn't have time. I pulled it up real quick in between, and I can send that in my board update on Friday. It is very similar, I think there were two schools, I think Oakland, there was two schools, I think the middle school, their, their majors went down this year, and Oakland, their majors went up this year, but all the other schools were very, very, very similar, yeah.
To some understanding this, frankly, are you saying there's seven hundred and thirty-three majors from one hundred and nineteen students?
Yes.
So some students have more than, have to know more than one.
Can you, would you give us more data, show us what percentage of students in each school got a major?
I can try to pull that up for you, yes.
Well, and if I can do just a little quick pause of PR for Oakland. Our data this year said eighty-six percent of our students had one or no majors. So our general population is doing, then when you start getting into your children in tier two with check-in and check-out, and of course, special needs populations, then you see an escalation.
So next step, next year, one of the things that we're going to be doing is, every year, schools talk about their, their minor and major rules of how, what, what is, what is a minor, what makes a minor, what makes a major, but we're going to look district-wide, because as you know, behavior is one of those things that, it could look very different in one building, it could look very different from one teacher to another teacher. I would say it's not like math where, you know, two plus two is always four. Behavior is a little different, in that we have to spend a little more time on determining really what is a major, what is a minor. You know, just because you're having a bad day doesn't make it the behavior more than it is, so we have to make sure we're having those discussions and then how we're recording that data. So, you know, sometimes behavior, you can't look at behavior across the board and say it's always equal, because it's not always equal. We're going to look more at some of our tier-two interventions and what more can we do for students that are not succeeding. Hopefully, at our middle school and high school, we're going to be running some emotional wellness groups during our ELT time with actually a therapy agency that, that we contacted to see if they were interested in collaborating with us. It is a way to get students who are, I would say, uninsured or underinsured and not be able to access mental health services, a way to give them a little of some mental health services. Expanding second steps in the seventh and eighth grade, again, hopefully the availability of the training, so we can expand that training with the zones of regulation. If we can't, if the company isn't providing those interventions, we will have to be facilitating those in-house. Here's at our middle school, it's going to involve some more study skills and character development, and then trauma-informed schools training for all staff.
If I could add, if I could add one, Tony, to set, part of the school safety grant that we applied for requires at least three hours of trauma-informed training for all full-time staff members, so we, we have committed to that. Also, part of our school safety grant would send three employees from the district to CISA ten to be trainers in nonviolent crisis intervention. Tony's already a trainer, and she's the only one in our school district, so it, it makes it pretty difficult to get all these people trained, so we're really looking forward to that opportunity as well.
Any questions on the P D I S?
Yeah, the mind-up curriculum, does that fit in with this?
The, that mind, you mean the mindfulness curriculum?
Well, it's, it's referred to in, in the diversity, it's called the mind-up K five curriculum. Mindfulness.
Yes, that is, that is similar to like the zones of regulation, yes. Yeah. It's, I, I would call it, it's, you know, P D I S isn't just a, it's more of a multi-level system, so there's lots of things that are involved in, in P D I S. What I gave you was really a snippet of, of really all the things that we're doing.
And so, and is there then more that goes with the zones of regulation for social emotional learning?
What do you mean, is there more to it?
Yeah.
Well, there is, it's kind of a way you're teaching children about their emotions, and that when kids are, too, when kids are happy, if a child is having difficulty with their emotions, you would refer to that. They may go down and speak with the guidance counselor, and we may talk about the zones and what zones that they're in, the teachers may talk about that within their classrooms, about what zone are you in? Is that what you refer to? I guess I'm not sure what you're, actually what your question is.
Isn't it fair what the, another curriculum that talks about more in-depth about how to regulate and manage your emotions, socio-emotional learning?
Is it paired with another curriculum?
Yeah.
I would, I would say the mind-up and the zones complement each other. I would say that there's a, they complement each other in what they are doing.
Yeah. My question is, this is general, and this can be for the principals too, but one of the things that I was wondering is, the P D I S, do you ever have kids? Um, but one of the things that I was wondering is, the PDIS, do you ever have kids that constantly misbehave and never get to the point where they get to have a celebration and they kind of fall through the cracks? Um, you know, how do you deal with those kinds of kids?
I would say there, there's, I say we try hard for that not to happen.
Okay.
So I would say that some kids are on individual goals where they get celebrated. We know that in order for a child to understand, um, and learn that they, they need to seek positive reinforcement instead of that negative reinforcement. We know a lot of kids seek attention and because, um, and they're seeking the negative attention because it just seems easier to get.
It's attention.
It's attention. Attention is attention. So I would say for those kids, we know that, um, this, it could be the second they do something positive, it is celebrated so that they start to learn to seek that positive reinforcement instead of just any reinforcement. So I think individual, that's when it comes down to that tier-two or tier-three where we're really looking at a tiered plan. Now, are there kids who tend to sabotage things? Yes, and we have to come back to the table to figure out how can we work around this? How can we, um, help the child understand that this is a good celebration? But I think we try hard for that not to happen.
Check-in and check-out, Tony, was an example of that situation for a student who really struggles to behave. We set them up basically kind of with a mentor and it's a check-in, check-out. And then they set a goal, or if they're able to achieve that goal, then we celebrate that success or report it.
And believe it or not, we have children sabotage check-in and check-out because they enjoy that interaction with that adult. So then what we do is we put some children on maintenance and right, maybe rather than doing a daily check-in and check-out, we sustain that relationship with a weekly check-in and check-out.
Thank you.
Some kids just don't want to graduate.
Some kids need some positive.
They do. And we know they have a chance.
I was wondering, um, and your major interventions or your major actions, how often are the police liaisons and officers involved in this?
I would say if it is, um, I, I guess I don't have data to say how often of those majors, how many of those majors. I'd have to go and look at every major to see if there was a contact. I would say anything that involves, um, you know, that, I think we involve the, the police liaison, I think, when there is a physical, um, threat or that we are seeking maybe services for the family or the student, cause that sometimes is, is, the call isn't necessarily always be looked at as a punitive thing, but more this family or this child is in, in a crisis and that we are looking for services for that, the child or the family outside of the crisis. But I, I, I would have to look at, um, that isn't in our EduClima right now. I don't think we have that as a point of, um, um, data that we're collecting on whether a nonviolent was, a referral to nonviolent was made.
Are we keeping any data about how many referrals?
I think, I think, um, our police liaison keeps data, but I, in our EduClima for our majors, I don't think you guys are collecting.
It's anecdotal.
Yeah, anecdotal, yeah. So it's not.
There is a, there is a tab that's referral.
Yes.
That you can click, but it's a general tab. It's not, doesn't specify what kind of referral.
Any other questions? How do you think, uh, you're, you're pretty pleased with the results of the zones that you're seeing so far?
I, I'm, I am hearing great things about the zones of regulation. I guess you would have to ask the two billiard principals who are actually using it.
Awesome. Yeah. Our, our, one of our kindergarten teachers brought it from, um, the Twin Cities, Shannon Ranch, um, and she started to implement it at small scale in her first year. And then we went, got the training and then full-on for fall this year. And, um, it's been so successful that we're actually working with our early childhood and, um, students and families and sending home posters and stuff so they can actually avoid it at home and use the same garbage. It's been really good.
I would say for the last two years, as elementary principals, we've been identifying in our kindergarten population, our biggest concern is dysregulation, not knowing how to adjust their, their energy level and their emotions appropriately to the situation and setting. And this is a tool that helps us actually teach children, first of all, self-awareness and then strategies they can implement to better cope with what they're feeling and what they're thinking in those situations so that their behavior does become more appropriate to what is expected.
Thank you. That's what I was hoping to hear. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Oh, the seclusion and restraint report.
Tony, keep it on.
Um, I, okay, I just hopped up for me. Okay, so this is an annual required report that I need to report to the board, um, at once a year about seclusion and/or restraint. The required portions are on the bottom of the report. So this last school year, we had, um, 31 reports of the use of seclusion and/or restraint involving 18 students. Um, and 16 of those students were identified with an IEP. This number is down from the 16th, 17th school year. This school year, um, 22 staff members participated in nonviolent crisis intervention. Um, this 22 additional staff members. And then also our elementary staff participated in one of the PDAs. Nonviolent crisis intervention is kind of, um, the training is really in two parts. The first part is really de-escalation, has nothing really to do with, um, the use of restraints. It's more about how, what are the things that you can do positively so that you never get to that point? And then, um, some of our elementary staff did participate in that portion of the training, not participating in the use of, um, uh, the actually, um, teaching of the use of restraints. Um, and so, and, but I, cause I think that is probably the more important part of the training and that the hope is that you never get, and have to use the other portion of that. Um, and we will continue to work on, we do see the number of times that we need to use seclusion and/or restraints. I would say the average amount of time that staff are actually having their hands on staff or on students is, um, small. Many, many of the reports are in seconds, not even minutes. But if you have to use a restraint to, um, remove a child from a, um, a safety concern, um, even if it's seconds, that needs to be reported. So, um, I would say that we're going to continue to work on, um, even having to reduce that some of that staff aren't having, um, to put their hands on students at all. So that, um, again, goes back to some of those, um, you know, social emotional learning curriculum, first second steps, first zones of regulation. All of that plays a role.
Do you know differences between high school, elementary and between the others?
At elementary, we have far higher numbers of use of seclusion and restraint in our elementary than in high school.
But you don't know the specific? It's okay if you don't know.
I, I, I can recall, so I can get all of them. I think we have one report at high school.
Oh, okay.
Yes. How many of these, of the, uh, total reports involved, do you think they had to clear the room while removing students? Is that common or is it?
It's probably common, yes, that you're removing other students, um, because of the safety of those other students. If the child is unwilling to move or, or if the child is on the other side, you don't want to move that child or move those students. If you move those students, um, for their safety and safety of the other student. Some of these, um, have to do with two kids fleeing, and I get this book back to the elementary. When a high school student chooses to leave the building, you're not necessarily preventing them from leaving the building if they're, you know, they're making a choice. Um, but when you have a five or six-year-old, we, that becomes a, there is a judgment call. There's a safety issue for, for young children fleeing from a building. And so that sometimes that, this comes into play when we are, if you are blocking a door that a child is trying to get out of, that is using seclusion. You are secluding them in this whole building, even though you know they're supposed to leave the school. But, so if you're preventing them from leaving, um, that is a, a, a reportable issue.
I thought you just said this last time, but once you gave, can you tell us about, you're getting more trainers and how many people are, need to train and stuff?
We're going to have three additional people become trainers. So it's a train the trainer training at CISA 10.
Okay.
Um, cause right now Tony's taking it all on and there's just not enough. You can only train so many people at once, huh?
It's about 20 people you can train at one time. And so our P, I'm going to tell you, our PDAs are full of things, very important things that, that people have, um, our staff have to do. This is just one of those things. So, you know, it's hard to train. Um, every year there is training and you try to train more and more people. You have to be trained, um, once every two years. So even you have to go through it again. So, um, the 22 people on here are just the initial, the new, the, they're newly trained, not recertified training.
Do you have any goals for the number of people that are trained that you have to give a take?
What do you, what were you?
I heard 100 staff members, 150 staff members, you'd set goals that way?
Well, I, it would be wonderful if we could train all staff in this. You know, I don't think all staff need the full trainees. I think more, or we could all staff need the de-escalation trainees. And that's why I think, um, we, we did a little variation of some of the training this year and got more staff on that, the, that de-escalation strategies.
Great job, Tony.
One other question, and again, are liaisons and officers getting involved in reselling students versus just?
This is just staff. Um, um, we, um, this is a required report for staff using seclusion and restraint. It does not involve if a police liaison would use, that, that's not included in this report. Um, I would say, yes, our, probably our police liaison has, um, um, dealt with, dealt with this, but for this purpose of this report, that doesn't get reported on here.
My guess is we're probably going to hear some point, um, probably the officer liaison report to, I think it's probably somewhere along the way to get it before. Thank you very much.
The way this year is really, I'm just kind of getting up to speed on what my responsibilities are and how I can help support, um, the staff members within the district and help support the district in general. Um, a couple of things that I'll, I'll kind of highlight here and then if you have questions, obviously feel free to ask. Um, the, with regard to the substitute staffing, um, we have 82 current active substitute teachers and 75 current active, uh, active substitute support staff. Um, that number for support staff has up significantly. Um, for whatever reason, we had quite a few people, um, who are interested in, in subbing in most support staff, um, capacities. Some people are teachers that, um, that also will check the box that they'd like to do some, like some para-subbing or clinical subbing. So that's been encouraging for us. Um, we do require that our substitutes do some online training every summer and they have to, every summer we clear out, um, our ASAP frontline system and have them, um, relocated back in so that we know, um, who is serious about wanting to sub for us. And, um, they have to, have to do some one-word captioning training and look over some PowerPoint, that kind of stuff. So, um, that it's nice to know that we have those people that are committed to come back over and over again. We also are fortunate to have ASAP frontline to do some automated calling for us. Um, I know that Shirley does a great job. She comes in, I believe at like 6:30, um, and, you know, calls on physicians, um, in the morning that are not filled and really works hard to do that and takes pride, um, in that position. We're, we're fortunate to have some automated calling, um, that assists with that as well. I'm going to look through the, the years of, of experience with our district. One of the things that's really nice is we, um, we like to highlight those that have been with us, um, at the beginning of every school year. I believe it's, it's 22 as well. We do five, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, and then, and beyond.
Never got to 35.
Okay. So 30 and beyond. Um, and work with Mustang Manufacturing to, um, create some really, um, really nice items to give to those people in recognition. Just moving on to the next page here, um, I just want to take a look at the existing staff statistics. And I did, um, comment on this in my, um, in my narrative, but one of the kind of glaring numbers that kind of stands out there is our paras that have resigned this year. Um, and if you look at the trend from, you know, over the last three years, um, to have 13 resign this year, um, seems pretty significant. So I did go back and take a look at the reasons why, um, to see if there was any pattern. Um, and I really couldn't find any pattern. Three are going back to school, um, to a graduate program, three are moving, you know, out of Menominee or out of the country. So they're, you know, it's kind of all over the place. Same thing, we have three that were at the high school, three that were at a couple of various, um, elementary buildings. So I didn't really see a pattern. And what I will be kind of looking for is it did send, um, our exit survey to all of our retirees as well as anyone, um, as they are leaving our district. And so I'll be looking at that data. That's one of the things that I have, has, I didn't, um, put it in my narrative, but that's one of the goals that I have for next year is to look at, and continuing, I should say, starting with the summer, just looking at that data to see if there's anything that, um, we could use as an opportunity for growth. Some of that feedback. Um, just, you know, as I, like I said in my narrative, um, you know, looking at, at my responsibilities hiring is kind of, um, a big deal right now, kind of in the throes of, um, interviewing and posting physicians and updating some interview questions. Um, I really try to work with the principals and let them take a look at the questions so that they can get some feedback. We collaborate on that and figure out what is the best way to, um, to develop questions that are going to get at the needs of the, the people that we will be interviewing coming into their buildings. I, you know, really refer to onboard and offboard our employees, um, do the, the new hire communications, administering contracts. Um, the substitute pieces, um, is shared greatly, um, with Shirley, with Julie and with Heidi. Um, they do a wonderful job of really kind of managing that. And so I will deal with some of the communication that might need to happen, um, with some of our substitutes. Unemployment, workers' compensation, um, the job postings and interview questions, um, student teacher placement. I work with primarily with three universities, um, UW Reform, UW Claire, UW Stout, um, to find appropriate placements for their, um, for their student teachers. Um, so that's, that's been kind of fun to have some, to see some new students coming into our field and working with them. So, um, just, you know, real quickly, some goals that I have for next year's, um, some kind of vision that I have for the, the HR department. Um, one of the things that, that came out of, um, our hourly compensation, um, that we did, the study that we did was a lot of people asked for updated job descriptions. Um, I also went to, attended a couple of Glasgow conferences, um, which is the Wisconsin administrators, um, or Wisconsin Association of, um, School Personnel Administrators. And so we talked about, they asked us to bring seven different job descriptions with us. Um, and then Bob Huttler, um, who's a lawyer through Mozambique, we've talked about, um, the, the relevance of updating job descriptions. And so that's one of the things that I would like to, um, add. So that's one of the things that I would like to, as things kind of slow down here with hiring, kind of like to work on some job descriptions and updating those. Also, kind of develop a bank of general interview questions that our administrators can go back to and pull from. So sometimes we're doing those changes to the interview questions off the fly, and I'd really like to make sure that they're tied back to, you know, what our vision is and what it is that, you know, that our school district values in hiring new staff. And then also kind of incorporate some more ideas surrounding like hiring for equity and diversity in A. And I'll be honest, I think we do a good job of this. Some of the things, again, that WASPA, that we talked about at our WASPA conference, I feel like we're doing already, and looking at some of our newer hires, that it's been nice to be able to bring in some diversity. But we want to continue to work on that and work on making all people feel welcome in our school district. So, I think, and then another big piece that will be coming, I think, in the eighteen, nineteen school year is just going to be that study of extracurricular coaching compensation. That'll kind of be the next thing that takes off. Anybody have any questions?
For the student teachers, are you able to hire all the requests that you have?
So far, we've been able to honor all of the requests that we have. Sometimes, some of those, like, some of the universities outside of those three, it might be kind of hard to find a suitable cooperating teacher, only because their requirements might be a little bit different. But we really do work hard to try to support, you know, anyone that, any university that are asking.
Do you know roughly how many were in the district this year?
Oh, I don't. No, that's okay. I, I don't, I know Jamie kind of, the process is that it starts right away. They start sending out communications essentially, like in February, March. And so that would have been something that Jamie handled up until, not for this year, but the, like, I should say, for this school year. So now I'm handling all of those that are coming in for the eighteen, nineteen school year, so. But I can check on, get that.
I was just curious. It doesn't, I didn't know how many were.
I would say, based on just this spreadsheet that I, and I can probably find that quickly, I would say that we probably had around twenty student teachers, but either first or second semester, fourth quarter, this would be about that number.
One other question about the paras. Are many of them working, you know, is their goal to become a teacher eventually, or do they like the fact that it's a position that they have? Or how would you describe the?
You know, I would say that many, you know, like what they're doing, and they like having that interaction with the students and supporting the students in a meaningful way. One thing that I will say that Tony and I have talked about quite a bit, with the change in, like, kind of some of these fast-track programs where someone is able to get a, like a special ed and teaching certificate, and I know I've talked with Heather about this a lot too. I know I have talked with a couple of different paras and encouraging them to take a look at those programs, so that they can, you know, so that we can, we can kind of grow our own. And so that's, you know, some of them maybe don't think about that. I would say they maybe don't think of themselves in that way, and it might just take a little nudge from, you know, someone who knows them to say, hey, you should, you should consider this.
What, as far as paras, do they have any special licensing, other than the certificate that I think we're paying for, we're going to pay for this here?
Only Title I, like, our Title I paras have a requirement, it used to be the no child left behind requirement, but now they've kind of changed it a little bit. And so we just recently are working on hiring a Title I para. And so they have some special requirements they need to have, to lose a four-year degree or an associate's degree, or there are a couple of different requirements that they would need to have in order to be a title para. Aside from the special, I mean, the special education program aid certificate that they get through the DPI, there isn't anything?
Well, you referenced David, what's the special education paras? They do need certification if we're going to pay for them through special education funding. So that's what we changed in the compensation system.
David, just, at the national convention, one of the sessions I attended to, they did talk about a school district that was working with a university to train, where special ed paras get trained up to be teachers, specialized teachers, so.
I am concerned about our hourly positions, though, and I think the changes we made to hourly compensation definitely helped, but I think somewhere I can continue to track. You know, you look around town, and a lot of these businesses with hourly positions, I mean, there's a lot wanted to sign up, and I know some places are starting to bump wages.
One of the reasons I ask is just like in any, you know, we have a lot of paras in the district, and so there's going to be a full range of abilities and that, and some of the ones that are really talented and want, pursue maybe to get them into a teaching position or something might be required.
We have been, and we will continue to do that, because it is a trickle-down effect too, with the teacher candidate pools being less than they used to be, you're seeing more and more of those paras do that.
I just thought that was a good growth for them, too.
Absolutely.
I, I think you did a great job. I love all this, I'm a Dan girl, I'm a Denver girl, I love this. Just in the future, can you add on your existing staff pages, like, the numbers? Like, I'd like to see where our total numbers have been over the years within the district. Does that make sense?
Wow.
So like, on your first page, you have total number of employees, four hundred and twelve. I'd like to know, like, what was, what was the, in the academic year twenty-fourteen, fifteen? I just kind of like to know, yeah. Just, I'd like to see how our numbers have stabilized. Does that make sense?
Yes, so, okay, like, just an overall total, because there's, there is the breakdown, I guess that's with years of experience.
I'm just looking at like the overnumber, the total overnumber, just, I, yeah.
Would you like that for our next meeting, or?
If you want to, I asked, I was the one that asked Tony about the previous data information. If you want to throw that in Friday's weekly information, that's fine. Just like in the future, if you could just add that in, I'm more curious how that is. And maybe it's just me that likes the numbers, but, okay, no problem.
Yeah, if any board member wants the reports changed, please just let me know, I can make sure we facilitate that.
I guess, I mean, I, it's just a personal request, I kind of like to see the trends and how they work.
Yeah, yeah, if you ever run into one, just feel free to call.
I was, I did email Tony last night, I was like, I'm going to ask you this, so get it ready.
Other subs. Are there days that we are absolutely saturated? A lot of days, or?
I wouldn't say a lot. I think there's certain times of the year where there may be more people that, or staff members that would request time off. And we try to, you know, we really try to be fair about that. And so I would say, yeah, but there are some days that we have some positions that go unfilled, and then, you know, that kind of goes back to the building a little bit. We really try to juggle and find, you know, people to fill in and ask, we frequently will ask substitutes to go into a different position, or if they are, maybe they're subbing for a half day, we'll call them and ask if they'd be willing to come in for a full day. It, it's, it's a tough business right now across the board, all over.
From my perspective, it's gotten better this year with the last couple, I think bringing Sam up board helped that. Even with the tough flu season we had, I think, you know, our sub pool was a little bit better than it had been. I think also some of the changes we've made, you know, with the employee handbook, we limited the number of personal days in the district, we cut that threshold down a little bit. And it still worked out, because if people had something that, you know, a family wedding or whatever it was, and they were the ninth person, I was able to have more flexibility in approving those. I don't think I ended up saying no to anybody because the threshold was down. So I think that helped with the sub as well. And we're really mindful with the training. I mean, I, we definitely want to prioritize professional development, but by prioritizing it on our PD days, prioritizing it in-house as much as we can, it's less people out of the district. So while we still think it's important to take advantage of those outside opportunities, prioritizing our classrooms, I think has helped.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you. All right. Moving on. Annual review of equipment, materials, and containing effort placing?
So with policy eight fifty, this is something that's reported to the board every year, and there really haven't been, you know, many changes over time. So that's just there for your review. We certainly appreciate the sponsorships that we get from the convention.
Any questions? All right, moving on. Calendar of board reports for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
So hopefully you've had a chance, this is a draft, you know, we've changed the calendar a little bit every year, and certainly between the months, based on how busy the agendas are, we try to spread them out a little bit. We also try to, you know, make it convenient, you know, for instance, for Kevin to give his report at certain times. But my big question is, you know, are there any of the reports that the board members would like to see, or is there any, are there any changes you'd like to see from this list?
I didn't have any changes about when we talked about retreats, be able to have some more data, like from previous years to make a good comparison. So, you know, the ones that, you know, some schools would be great to see compare and contrast, get some challenges, one that I'd be curious about, virtual education, you know.
So like, what do we think, like, three years, five years, and more?
Because three would include the previous, one year from previous superintendent, and then since you've been here, correct, a minor year.
I finished up my core period.
Why, like, five years, no. No, three's fine.
Okay. And we did talk a little bit about evaluation piece, and I know, like, with Tony with her next steps, talking about our goals, we've tried to expand the reports a little bit. That's good feedback about the data, we'll also add that to these upcoming reports.
Yeah, the evaluation is going to just say, you know, I don't know how we do this, but we almost need to come up with a process for us to evaluate some of the programs that we're supposed to be doing. Right now, we're just kind of giving the reports, saying thank you, and I don't know how we go about that, it's going to be something we need to brainstorm sometime. But just like, how are we going to look at the data, and what are we going to use criteria for evaluating the reports and the data, and this is a worthwhile event. So it needs to be quite a discussion, that's something.
Well, I think, you know, like Tony just did, I think that's a good start, and as you hear the reports, that's a great time for the board members, you know, it's even better if you can, you know, call or email, if on a Thursday or Friday, or even Monday morning, because then we can try to get it for you. But if nothing else, getting the feedback tonight, now Sam and Tony know for next year how to modify the reports, or get information.
But if we're evaluating, at some point, then we have to say, yes, we think this is successful, and we think this is successful.
Okay.
I think we need a process, it's kind of true, the evaluation is saying, yes, good, go then. And so, you know, if we're evaluating things, at some point, then we have something to do that, potentially do that.
Okay. Any other comments about the calendar board reports? All right, moving on. Item A. Items related to the next board meeting, next meeting dates, board meetings, reports.
So there is an old meeting at the end of June. We have a group going for a model school conference, so our next meeting will be in July.
Are there any items that the board members wish to consider for the future agenda? All right. I am signing out to adjourn, to go into closed session. Take a break. Take a break. Yep, I'll move to adjourn. Is that you, Tony?
Ah, Heather.
Oh, Heather. I was saying, I knew you were, I got the second one.
Don't forget my voice out.
I should be able to, eh? Okay. Uh, rated vote? Voice vote? Voice vote, all voice vote, okay. Yes. All in favor, vote with your feet.
Aye.
I think we have a nice crowd, it's really.
Room's room, long house, and stop.